I think it is from this angle. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the right, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Want to read the call?
Dear Supervisor, please be advised that the Tremple County Board of Supervisors will meet at 7:00 PM on January 25th, 2021, in the county boardroom. All county board members' claims are due in the county clerk's office by noon on January 5th, 2021, so they can be prepared for audit committee approval. Sincerely, Paul Severson, County Clerk. Can you keep going?
Yes.
Rule call. Rick Nimitz?
Razzant.
Douglas Swinters?
Here.
Sally Miller? Sally Miller? Richard Satcha?
Here.
Joe Feltes?
Here.
George Brandt?
Here.
Beth Killian?
Here.
Randy Tulloson?
Here.
Michelle Haynes?
Here.
John Austin?
Here.
Chuck Wallach?
Present.
Tim Zeglin?
Here.
Dan Schreiner?
Here.
Jeannie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan?
Here.
Ron Johnson?
Here.
Back to Sally Miller. Sally Miller? Okay, put her as a no. Then we are 15 and 16.
Certified open meeting law requirement been met with proper posting and notification. We have an 11-item agenda. There is a couple of changes. Item 5A, Brett Sevingson is not going to be here tonight, got conflicts. And also, item 6G, the personnel bargaining, exec finance, is now off the agenda. We got taken care of in this past meeting we just had, so.
Who to approve the amended agenda or change?
Doc Second.
Post made in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It's carried. Approval of the December 2020 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Post made in seconded. Is there any corrections? Spreading none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Spreading none. It's carried. Now we're down to appearances. We'll start with item B, Human Services, Deb Surbox.
Good evening, everybody. Do you have a light on?
Push the button. Is it light up?
Oh, there we go. Yep. Hi, everybody. Thanks for letting me come and chat. I was going to present this last month, but you had a bit of a busy agenda, so I asked to be moved to tonight, so thank you for that. The report you're going to get tonight from me is a little bit of a summary of Human Services and how we've used the resources that the taxpayers of the county have given us and that you've approved for us in a cumulative type of fashion. I have worked, this is the fourth county department of Human Services I've worked for in the state of Wisconsin. I've worked at Sauk, Monroe, and St. Croix, and now I'm delighted to be here since 2013 in Tremple County, where I grew up. This is my home, and a lot of you know me from when I lived here when I was younger. This board has been an exceptional board, but I have worked with boards that have kind of felt that Human Services is, there's never enough money for them, and all they do is ask for money. And I think we've proven ourselves to be a different department than that, and I think the numbers will show you that. One of my first jobs in Human Services, my boss said to me, if you had all the money in the world, it wouldn't be enough to solve the problem. So what are you going to do with what you have? And that's really how we've run our department and really have looked at things. This county board has given us increases in levy throughout the years. We have sincerely appreciated it. During, since 2013, which is the timeline here, because that's when I started, we of course had pay adjustments every year. We've had health insurance increases. We've had a drug epidemic that we've dealt with. We've served a lot more people in mental health and substance abuse programs. We have not created a waiting list in the senior nutrition program and continue to serve everybody in that program. And we've seen the kids in out-of-home care grow to historic levels of almost four times what they were even five years, six years ago. So I have a sheet in front of you, those of you who are here. It's full of numbers, and those of you who like lots of numbers to read, you'll enjoy it. Those of you who don't, I'll hit the high points in this PowerPoint for you. Okay, Vance? Vance? What am I pressing wrong here? So as you can see on this slide, our annual amount of levy that goes to the Human Services Department has increased over the years. The numbers, I have additional information that I'll show you that we are kind of a good deal, but we were, in 2013, we had a levy to our department of 1.125 million, and 2021's budget, we are just a hair over 2 million. So there has been an increase, and we do appreciate that. But here's another way of looking at our department. The blue lines, the big dark lines, are the total revenues for our department. They have grown pretty substantially. The smaller lines that you see, the kind of orangish, brownish lines, those are the levy that we've gotten each year. You can see there's a slight, if I can get this to work, I don't suppose I can. You can see there's a slight increase in levy, but you can see that the growth in our other revenues has been pretty substantial. We've, our other revenues that we get in our department are state allocations. A lot of the increase is due to some grants that we've gotten, as well as being able to bill MA for a number of the services that we are now making available in our community, such as the CCS program and expanding other MA programs like that. Overall, the amount of levy as a percentage of our total revenues has remained about the same, around the 24% of our total revenues. That percentage has remained the same over the years. We, with your approval, we have three different types of reserve accounts. The reason we have reserve accounts is so that we don't have to dip into the general fund, because some years are bad years and some years are good years in Human Services. The first type of reserve account we have is just the general Human Services Reserve Account. The balance as of 12/31/2012, before I arrived, was at $467,180, I can't see the numbers in front of me, $85. When we closed out 2019, and that's the most recent audit that we have, so I don't have projections for 2020 yet, we had $500,000. The reason it's $500,000 is that is our max. Since 2012, we have grown this account. We have, in 2016 and 2017, we had some bad years, and we actually took out about almost $300,000 out of the account. Since, in 2018 and 2019, we put funds back in to keep it at the $200,000. But when we had our bad years in 16 and 17, we didn't have to take anything out of the general fund. So this is a nice protection for that. The other two special reserve accounts that we have, one is for the senior nutrition program. That was set up, I believe, in 2016, and this is so that we have, when we have some unspent funds at the end of the year, we can put them in here. And this is set up so that we don't have to create a waiting list for our senior nutrition program. We continue to see the state and federal resources for that program continue to go down, and of course, as you know, we have an aging population that's going up. And so we're setting aside these funds so that we don't have to tap into the levy or tap into the general fund when we start needing additional funds for that program. The last one is our CCS recruitment program, and that's a mental health program that we started in 2015. And the reason we had to set this up is because the state has this odd way of paying us. We bill a flat rate throughout the year for the, each unit of service that we deliver. Then at the end of the year, the next year, by May, July, they have us send in this complicated report with every penny we've spent in the program and our overhead and all that kind of stuff. Then they send it down to some people down in Texas who crunch the numbers, and then in December, we get a report back, and if our actual costs were less than they gave us, we have to return some of it. Or if our actual costs were more, they give us additional funds. So we've had some years where we've had to pay back, and so we were able to set aside this $180,000. So if we ever have to have a payback year, again, it doesn't compromise our budget. It doesn't affect the general fund. So you can see that when you compare the balance of 12/31/2012 to 12/31/2019, we've grown these reserve accounts by $334,000. Whoa, go back. The other thing that we've done is we have given funds to the general fund. This graph is a cumulative amount that we've given to the general fund. So think of it as like a savings account. So the first year, and I'm sorry this is so faint, the first year, we put about $130,000 in the general fund. The second year, in 2014, we put in almost $600,000. So that brought our account up almost to $800,000. In 2015, we added another $150,000. 2016 and 17, we didn't ask for anything out of the general fund. Those were the years I told you that we had bad years. We didn't have any impact on the general fund. And then in 18 and 19, we were able to add additional resources to the general fund. So total, we've added $1.126 million to the general fund through these years. So when you take that information, and first of all, if you took, the first number on this graph is if you took our 2013 levy and every year's budget you compared to the 2013 levy that we got in our department. Because again, if 2013 and then the next year, we got an extra $10,000, and the following year, we got an extra $20,000, that second year, you'd have to say that we're at $30,000, because you have to add each year. So if you compare each year, collect it, add it up together, compare it to the 2013 budget, we've added almost $3.5 million that we've gotten more from levy. However, we have returned $1.126 million back in the general fund, and we have grown our reserve account to protect the general fund by $334,000. So over the eight years, we have increased, the county board has given us $2 million altogether, yeah, total, over those eight years compared to the 2013 budget. If you divide that out by eight years, we then will have, it would look like we only asked for 2.59 or just 2.6% increase each year. In that 2.6% increase, and again, we've gotten an increase. We're not saying we didn't get an increase. But in that increase, we were able to accommodate placing many more kids in out-of-home care, serving many more people with mental health and substance abuse issues, deal with the drug epidemic, staff increases, insurance increases, and anything else that we have to increase that just the cost of doing business goes up. So we have gotten an increase, but it has been pretty modest, and we've shared this information with the Human Services Board, and they suggested that I bring this to you. So that's what this page of all these numbers tells you in a real quick summary. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them now or at any time.
Any questions? Is it Deb or Mr. Zeglin?
Well, thank you, Deb. I think your purpose here is to show that you've been financially responsible. The department's been financially responsible. Could you go back to that first, I think it was the first content slide, the line graph?
Okay.
And I just have a suggestion. This is what was running through my mind when I was looking at that graph.
There.
Right, that right there?
Yeah. This one shows a, it shows, there's no comparison here. So this shows the extent of expenditures or how much, the amount of the levy. I guess what I'd like to see, I think you might strengthen your case or at least provide an instructive comparison if you had a line there that showed the size of the budget. Was the budget going up? Was the budget going down? What percentage of the budget does this represent as the budget changed?
And that's what this graph shows you. This graph going up is what our total budget, those are our total revenues. So that's what's showing our total revenues. In, included in that blue line is the levy, but I did create the levy separate so you could see what percentage it was of our total budget.
No, no. I'm talking about the whole, the whole county budget.
Oh, the county budget. Oh.
So how much of, yeah, so again, if you back up, I understood this, but if you go to, if you look at that line, you're not telling us how much of the county, how much are you spending, 5% this year, 7% this year? Is it going up or down? There's no comparison.
Generally speaking, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, we can only increase, based on the county, the levy freeze, we can only increase what the growth of the property's been or 1% or 1, it's been, it's been averaging around 1 to 1.5% a year that the levy can grow. So we, we have asked for more. We, we're at 2.6% increase annually. The levy can only grow about 1 to 1.5% annually. So we have asked for more.
So.
It's what our net new construction is, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that too. So then you're saying that, that the, that line exactly parallels the increase of the levy?
No, the increase in the levy would be, again, be about 1 or 1.5% a year. It depends. Some years, it's 1.26, some years, it's 1.12. It's, each year, it's a little bit different. But that's about the total amount that the levy can grow of the regular levy. Of that regular levy, so if that's growing at 1 point, say 1.5%, go on the high end, if that's growing at 1.5%, our levy has been growing at 2.6%. So we would be running a little bit higher. We have been costing the county a little bit more, but we've also had to deal with, again, some pretty significant human crazies in our county, including the number of kids in out-of-home care and the drug problem and that sort of thing.
Okay, now I get it.
Yeah. I mean, we haven't been increasing at 5%, but we have been running higher than the county, county levy can grow. That's a fair statement.
Any other questions? Is it Deb? Very good. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Okay, presentation by Kurt Brenner and Sam Skut. John, I see John's here too.
Got a couple handouts here. We're going to send to you. Take one, pass it down.
Sally should, Sally should be on.
I see her. Okay. 7:20.
Just want to make sure.
So that way I can call on her twice?
Choices. Decisions, choices. Look, every one of these is, one, two, three, four. Eight choices.
Well, good evening, everyone. Won't take much of your time tonight. I wanted to give you a brief update on progress of the project. John Kane from Ventures here with me. And then after we give you some update on the progress, then I do want to get some thoughts from you in regards to the renovation portion of the old building. So currently, right now, Ventures team and our team is working with the Building Oversight Committee, as well as many members of the county staff, to, to move the Justice Center design along. And right now, we've, we're through schematic design. We're into design development. Engineers are working on their basis of design for the mechanical electrical systems. The soil borings have been complete. We did get a geotechnical report back that there was no real big issues with the soil, so that was, that was very good to hear. We had some areas where they're going to need some compaction from some, some fill from the backfill of that building. Does needs to potentially be excavated and recompacted, but nothing that was earth-shattering, where we need high water content or, or blasting or any sort of thing like that. Survey is underway. I was expecting to have that this week. They're waiting on some information back from the title company on easements to make sure that we're getting all of the coordination of all the utilities in line. I have had some preliminary discussions with members of the city to have some meetings to talk about the street closure and what we do with those utilities. So all of that is progressing nicely. We are looking to, to break ground in the spring here. We're still working on how we're going to go about the bid packages. We do intend to bid this in multiple bid categories and bid packages. We'll have to do the demolition of the structure across the road, obviously, first. Like to get that done earlier so we can uncover any, any issues that may be under that structure. So that'll be the first thing we do. And then we'll be looking at footings, foundations, structural steel package that will follow after that in the spring. So you'll see progress moving forward. So for the most part, things are moving along as planned, and we're still on target with the scope for the Justice Center in regards to its infrastructure footprint, the budget that was associated to that at, at $40 million for that addition. And the reason that these drawings are here for you, and I apologize for those of you that are online, because it looks a little fuzzy. John and I are just going to go through, and I'll, I'll do my quick overview, and John knows much more detail than this, so when you get into the Q and A, you can, you can pick his brain. But on the first page of the handout that we've given to you, and really, the reason that this is before you tonight is we'd like some feedback from the board to what extent you want to do renovation of the old facility. Now, you will recall, when we approved the project back in November, this first page is what was included in that scope of work, where we were going to have the costs associated with the connection to the existing facility with the corridor that's in red on both of those floors, and then there would have to be some minor modifications to those spaces that are there that were basically bringing that corridor through. What has happened over the discussion with the Building Oversight Committee, I also did speak to the Exec and Finance Committee, I don't remember that was, last week or whatever. We talked about what, to what extent do you want to do some renovation in the existing facility. There's more than enough square footage to move ADRC back onto the campus, but there's been some discussion about where ADRC goes or where some of the existing departments will go. Okay? So let's start with this first page here. You'll see that up at the top of the, of the page there that John has in yellow and red, you'll see that on the left-hand side of the page, it identifies the first floor. We've got land management and UW extension, and then that red corridor, which basically has to connect the new structure to the existing corridor that's on first floor. On second floor, we have the same connecting corridor that goes through the Health Department. Child support is there as well, but child support is being relocated over into the addition of the new Justice Center. So that connecting link was the requirement, all of the demolition and the new construction, to be able to make that connecting link between the two facilities is included in the scope of the project. Okay? Now, if you go to the next page, John has put together three options, A, B, and C?
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C. This one is one that kind of identifies, and John, you can jump in here whenever you want. This next one identifies a potential limited scope in regards to what we may do for renovation on that first floor. And there's been some discussion by the committee, as well as some of the staff members, about the location of this county boardroom. Does the county boardroom obviously get relocated, and where does it get relocated? So there's been some discussion about the county boardroom being on the first floor. So I do kind of want to walk you through how individuals would enter the building. Read your little pointer here. This red dot. Doesn't really work. Just wants. Good there? There we go, right there. Perfect. Okay, so just want to show you the traffic flow here on first floor. If you look on the left-hand side of the screen over here, this is the new main entrance. And the plan is that when people that park in this parking lot over here, they're going to walk into this new main entrance. There'll be a screening station here, similar to what you have at the front doors now on the, on the outside of the campus. And then people will be able to walk into the old part of the building, or they will walk into the Justice Center that's over here on the left-hand side of the building. Now, I've asked John to put three concepts together so that you can kind of get a feel for what that may look like. Some is, is just the limited connection point. This is another one that shows you a little bit more renovation that may take place, which shows the county boardroom going up here in the blue, and then we're showing UW extension here in the purple. Okay? And that's on first floor. Up on second floor, we're still keeping health where it's at. Up on the second floor, we are taking that corridor and cutting it between the department. But then if you look over on the right-hand side, is where the ADRC could potentially fit in regards to spaces. Now, we're not identifying or doing any layout yet in regards to walls, rooms, square footage by square footage of what you currently have and the location and moving it over onto this campus. And this area down here, this land management, this is in the green. This is, this is an option A. Let's go to B. Option B, we're seeing some of the same, up here, county board, UW extension, as we enter in on first floor. Over here, register of deeds, county clerk, county board chair, Wisconsin room. That is proposed. Do we move this up at this end of the area? So one of the discussions that we've had at committee level is individuals who park in this lot right here, by the time they walk into this area, and they would walk, I'm going to use Paul's office for an example. If they would walk in this front door, they're going to walk down this corridor, they're going to walk all the way back down the corridor here to get to Paul's office. And we believe that Paul's office and some of these other general government spaces have some of the highest traffic levels of customers coming to the county offices. So this option identifies, do we move those spaces closer to the front area, which would entail have some additional renovation needs that would be there? This option on first floor shows, in dark blue, what ADRC's footprint would be if it was on that end of the campus, okay, where the Sheriff's Department is and where Register of Deeds currently is. Up on the second floor, we still see health the same way. We've got Human Services, Veteran Services on second floor, and then Land Management stays the same way that we saw in option A. So let's go to C. Okay, C still keeps the county boardroom on the first floor. We do see that the board chair, the county clerk, and the space where the Wisconsin room, where that small conference room is located even closer to the front entrance. ADRC is moved up here, where it was previously shown down here by the sheriff's office, moved up here in this, this corner of the structure. Register of Deeds is moved here on first floor. And then up on the second floor, I'm sorry, right here, UW extension is in the purple. Second floor health stays the same. Human Services would stay the same as the last one, and then land, land management is there. Now, the reason that we, I've asked John to put it in color, because there hasn't been discussions with the departments. We haven't had any discussions with the departments of where they would want to go. We wanted to bring it to you as the county board to determine what level of work do you want the design team and our group to, to look into this for renovation of the existing facility. To kind of give you an idea, when we had some discussions with Brian from, from Hailers, and we were talking about financing, and we talked about the $40 million, $40 million doesn't impact the taxpayers. It's a non-impact to the taxpayers. When we talked to him about additional dollars that you could add to the project without impacting the taxpayers, we didn't get an exact number from him, because there's still some variables that are in there. But the number that we talked about was, if you earmarked $2.5 to $3 million, we can address almost the lion's share of all of this work if you would say, let's do some renovation for each one of these departments. And when I say renovation, we could potentially go in, remove some interior walls, do some updates with payback in regards to diffusers. You don't have to do anything with your hair, hair handlers, because those have been replaced. It would be some finishes and that sort of level. The sort of feedback that we want from you as the, as the county board is, do you want us to explore, meeting with the, with the departments, identifying and kind of authenticating or looking at the space program and going in on that, and then come back to you with a plan and with a cost to be able to do this work? Or do you just want to stick with what's originally planned, Justice Center, the connection point, and that's the extent of the scope of the work, and the departments that are there can find spaces within the, within the county board, existing county facility to be able to move their departments? Did I throw too much at you quickly?
Come on, George.
Yeah.
As, as a member of Sec Finance, we've, I'm glad to see the options. Honestly, why does the county boardroom is in the best place in terms of accessibility is a mystery to me. There are any number of other departments that get a lot more traffic than the county boardroom.
Sure.
And.
I could speak to that.
At least after evening, like tonight, what you can explain.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the intent is, it's really, that was driven around security.
Oh, I'm just not getting close to it. Is a driver, ADRC coming back to the building is a driver for this discussion. I also know that, from our discussion at Exec Finance, that the point that you made, that the most heavily trafficked offices are the ones that should be closest to the entrance, and, yeah, those are the things that really need to be looked at, but, yeah, talk to the department heads.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I love option C. I'll put that on the record.
That's Sally Miller, by the way. And then Judy, got a comment?
I have a comment. I don't have a mic that works that says Oddwater, Odd, you know, I'm sitting by it. I think it's a great idea to talk to department heads, because I know Human Services, in our Human Services Committee, we had quite a lengthy meeting about the space and what they require. They have been in probably the worst spot in the building for a long time, you know, stacked up in hallways, people sitting on top of each other. A lot of work that's done in Human Services is confidential, and our confidentiality doesn't really work well when you're sitting on top of each other and people can't see you. So I think talking to department heads makes the most sense. Who am I to say what somebody needs when I'm not here every day and not micromanaging them in that way? So, go for it, that's my opinion.
Mr. Wallach?
Yes, just from Exec Finance, too, there was a big push when if we want ADRC back here, they want it to be closer to the main entrance.
Well, it wasn't, and I guess I just want to stress, it wasn't ADRC stating that, it was just an optic and things that John and I have been a part of.
Well, and what they had said is they have people with disabilities, and if we stick them, if they kind of come way down there and walk all the way across, it was not very pleasant for them.
So that's part of the concept of potentially moving it up on this portion of the building. We did have, and I'm just gonna throw all ideas out there to let you know, but no definitive decisions, but there was some discussion at the, sorry, I'm not recording it right here. There was some discussion at the Building Oversight Committee, that do we potentially move them into some of the sheriff's part of the area, and then do we make it so that we secure this off, and people don't walk through screening and just go into the ADRC off of this parking lot? And that gets into a whole other discussion, but it is something that would be close proximity to parking, there's some opportunities to be able to do that, so. If the census is from the group that you'd like to explore this further, then we will do that and come back with a more refined option. That's kind of what we're looking for, for direction from the board here tonight, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ziegler?
Yes, I'm also going to refer to the most recent Exec Finance Committee meeting, you know, and bring up a topic that came up there, which we haven't addressed yet. I'm not sure if you're going to go there, Kurt, I'll just, you can segue off of mine.
Sure.
But the question we talked about at Exec Finance was the question of whether or not to add the cost of renovating the old building to add that to the bond issue. And that was, this board approved, with only one exception, one Novo, this board approved, I believe in November, moving ahead with the project, moving ahead with the building project. That was a $40 million building project for the Justice Center. The board never addressed the question of how to pay for the renovation of the old building. Now, if we're gonna move ADRC, and which I think is a given, then that's a major change to the old building. Well, if we're gonna do that, then obviously, we're gonna have to spend some money on renovating the old building. So I think the foremost question in my mind is, is the board willing to add that approximately $2.5 million to the bond issue, and make that bond issue comprehensive, so that it covers both the construction of the Justice Center and the renovation of the old building? And I think that's really the key question I'd like to hear more from the board about. Do we, and also as a corollary to that, I'd like to see a decision pretty soon, so we can move forward with the project. Instead of, I don't want to see the project, you know, we approved the $40 million project two months ago, we still don't have a bond resolution in front of us. It would be good to make a decision now, so whether we're gonna tack on this $2.5 million or not gonna tack on the $2.5 million, one way or the other, to make a decision to approve the bond resolution for the original.
No, I will add on to that. There is an option that I've done with other counties, that if you decided to give direction, oh, my pointer, to give direction to do a design concept and actually put bid documents out for this portion of the project, the renovation, that could be strictly bid as an alternate, an ad alternate, okay? So we would get what you approved back in November as a base bid, and then there could be an ad alternate that would be separate and apart, that way you could say, here's the separation, here's ad alternates available to do the renovation, so that way you're consistent with the scope, it's just a matter of that bid component. Now, what Tim is referring to is that when we talked to Brian Riley at Aylers, there's a timeframe of being able to do that bond authorization, so that you can get these historically low financing rates, that you would want to make that decision at that point, if you wanted to incorporate that rather than waiting until the bids were there. So, that's something to kick around for the discussion.
Are we pretty sure we're going to have a bond resolution for at least the original project in February?
I mean, that's what we discussed at the Exec Finance.
That's what we discussed, I want to get it out here, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
I think you need to, I mean, I think you need to push for that, because you don't want to see the rates climb, get that locked down, so that you can...
But once again, I want you to hear from the rest of the board.
So I have a question for you. So is your, is what you're asking to add 2.5?
I'm not asking, Jean.
No, but I mean, is that your thought, that we should just add the 2.5 million to $40 million bond?
That's the thought, that's the one option that we discussed at Exec Finance.
Does that option make the most sense?
It makes the most sense in terms of...
So why don't we just let somebody do a motion to do that?
Well, we're talking about it.
Okay. What? We can't do it tonight. Oh, thanks, we gotta wait till February to do it.
Well, I think what you would do is, when that authorizing resolution comes here from Aylers, you wouldn't be surprised that it was at $42.5 million. That you at the board are like, what are we doing here? You can identify that this was earmarked, that way, then that authorizing resolution would be before you, if you're gonna make edits to it or whatever, but that that was the basis of why that would even be discussed.
Okay, I got carried away with wanting to do a motion tonight, but when we first talked about, you know, years ago, doing this project, there were a lot of issues with the whole building. So it doesn't make any sense to me to have this whole new addition, and all of the stuff that's still wrong with this building exists. We need to fix it.
The things that I would focus on when we look at this scope would be interior renovation, removing some walls and doors, upgrade your ADA issues if you have, and do some finishes. So it's not a complete gut, that's not what I'm proposing. There's a lot of things that can be salvaged, there's a lot of things that can be saved. John's a very creative individual when it comes to that, he's done that on a lot of projects, and that's what I'd like to give him green light on, to start digging into that. He's chomping at the bit to start giving you all some ideas, but we just haven't given him, you know, we haven't let the horse run free yet, so.
I'm smiling under this banner.
Any other comments from the board? John, did you have something you wanted to add, or?
Well, I think Kurt's done a great job in summarizing everything and keeping in mind that the options, the options that are presented are kind of at that 30,000-foot level, looking down, and I think you saw the progression from A to B to C, and that each option began to address more of the issues that we knew existed, and I think you're right, option C really begins to summarize best the questions about where ADRC should be located, and the county clerk, and all of those other functions. So I think you're right on in that particular regard, and we know that the first step we need to do is to meet with these department heads, and really understand what their needs are, particularly Human Services being here tonight, understand that there's probably gonna be more need for them to have more space, understand that the little colored boxes that you have in the plans are a one-to-one relationship between what they have now and what's in the diagram, and once we talk to the department heads, we're gonna know that those numbers are gonna change. So, yeah, I think Kurt summarized quite well what we're looking to do.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the board at all? No, we'll just move on, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Renee, would you hit them last two switches again down there? Thank you. Okay, we're on item six, eight. Board Chair says that's on the 15th of February, I've got a written resignation from Michael Nelson, who's resigning for medical reasons, he's not doing real well, currently is in the Dov Nursing Home Facility. We wish him well, but we do have a resolution here to make.
Oh, is this everybody?
Yeah, so I'll have to have Paul read the resolution.
Whereas Michael Nelson has, and you have a new resolution on your desk, by the way, not the one that was in your packet. Whereas Michael Nelson has represented District 14 as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2010 to 2021, and whereas Mr. Nelson has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, including County Board Vice Chair from 2012 to 2014, along with Committee Chair of the Personnel and Bargaining Committee, and Agriculture and Extension Committees, also serving on the Executive and Finance Committee, the Highway Committee, and the Environment and Land Use Committee. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of the years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which have rendered him an invaluable participant in county government on behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by County Board Chair John Austin.
Motion to adopt?
Tell us second.
Motion by Thompson, seconded by Nutter. Is there any discussion?
We should give a round of applause.
Yeah, that one sounds good, too. After the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, none that carries. No, that's...
Everybody signed that one, right?
Yeah, we did pass the card around, I hope everybody got a chance to sign it.
Uh, this is Gillian.
Yeah.
Could someone please sign my name to the card?
You want us to forge, you're trying to get us in trouble here?
You're on television, Beth.
Uh, yes.
And probably for Sally, too, right? We'll get your names on there.
Thank you.
And Michelle.
Oh, and Michelle, too, thank you.
Okay, three names, got it. Okay, thank you. We'll go on with item B, Exec Finance, support state funding for equitable return on utility tax collection.
Okay, where's the debt resolution? Here we go.
Whereas shared revenue utility aid payments help counties and municipalities pay for services provided to tax-exempt utility property. Whereas these payments in lieu of taxes are also viewed as partial compensation for the air pollution, noise traffic congestions, property maintenance, emergency services, and land use limitations caused by the presence of utility property. Whereas the state has typically retained about 80% of the utility tax collections for use as general purpose revenue, GPR, rather than return those dollars to counties and municipalities where the utilities are located. And whereas in 2019-20, the state collected $351.4 million in utility taxes, but only returned $75.6 million to local governments as utility aid. And whereas, moreover, payments generated through the current utility aid formula have largely been stagnant, both as a percentage of state or tax collections, and in the actual dollars distributed to counties and municipalities. Stagnant or declining aid results burden some shift in taxes to owners of remaining taxable property. Now, be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby encourage the governor's 2021 and 2023 budget to include a provision in your 2021-2023 budget plan to provide a fairer, more equitable return of utility tax collections to counties and municipalities as utility aid, with an inflationary increase built into the utility aid formula. Introduced by the Executive Finance Committee, Chuck Wallach, Tim Ziegler, George Brandt, John Austin, Richard Sashow.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, too. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallach, seconded by Kurt Scoyen. Any discussion at all? No, this can go by voice, but all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries? Human Services, Exec Finance Committees, dual membership on document management services 2021 budget adjustment.
Whereas Human Services has purchased and is implementing the TCM case management software to electronically record client data. And whereas the TCM system does not have a document management component to store scanned documents that are essential to the client files, such as medical records, signed documents, invoices, et cetera. And whereas having electronic access to scanned documents is essential to deliver high-quality, informed case management and therapeutic services. Whereas Tremplaw County IT Department has worked with OPG III Incorporated to provide document management services to the other departments in the county, and the fee to create a document management system for Human Services would be $29,754.80. Whereas Human Services did not include these costs in their 2021 budget proposal due to not being aware of the cost of adding this feature to the TCM software. Whereas having access to electronic documents through a document management service would be required to allow staff to work remotely, especially during the COVID pandemic. Now, be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors approves providing the Human Services Department Fund 202, $29,754.80 from the general fund, and seek reimbursement through COVID funding, as this service is required to support telwork, telework for staff. Introduced by Human Services Committee, Rick Nimitz, Kurt Scoyen, Michelle Haynes, Jeanne Nutter, Sally Miller, Dorje Blaha, Diane Schrader, Karen Seepick. And Executive Finance Committee, Chuck Wallach, John Austin, George Brandt, Tim Ziegler, Richard Sashow.
Motion by Ms. Nutter.
Second.
Seconded by Joel Feltes, was it? Seconded by Joel. Okay, any discussion? No, this requires a vote. Oh, yep, there, just tell us a little about it.
I just, just want to clarify, Paul, on the fiscal impact, does it say $19,000 or does it say $29,000 on the resolution?
No, I didn't read that part anyway, it'll be the 29.
Yep. I just want to let you know, we have talked to Integrity, the group we've been working with to claim the Sufima, and they believe that this is a very appropriate use of that, so we should be able to get this reimbursed through that. The other thing about FEMA, I don't know if Paul's had a chance to tell you, but we just found out today from the Integrity Group, we've been looking at having to put 12.5% of whatever we claimed to FEMA as, with our funds to fill in the gap, they pay the rest of it. We just found out today that FEMA will be reimbursing at 100%. So Paul's been earmarking close to $70,000 for that 12.5%, which means that we'll be able to save that, so I just wanted to... through COVID funding as this service is required to support tel... tel... work, telework for staff. Introduced by Human Services Committee, Rick Nimitz, Kurt Scoyan, Michelle Haynes, Jeanne Nutter, Sally Miller, Georgie Blaha, Diane Schrader, Karen Seepack. And Executive Finance Committee, Chuck Wallach, John Austin, George Brandt, Tim Ziegler, Richard Sashaw.
Motion by Ms. Nutter.
Seconded.
Seconded by Joel Feltes, was it? Seconded by Joel. Okay. Any discussion? Not? Just require the votes. Oh, Deb, there's just Charles Loubout.
I just want to clarify, Paul, on the fiscal impact, does it say $19,000 or does it say $29,000 on the resolution?
No, I didn't read that part anyway. It'll be the 29.
Yep. I just want to let you know, we have talked to Integrity, the group we've been working with to claim this through FEMA, and they believe that this is a very appropriate use of that. So we should be able to get this reimbursed through that. The other thing about FEMA, I don't know if Paul's had a chance to tell you, but we just found out today from the Integrity Group, we've been looking at having to put 12.5% to whatever we claim to FEMA as with our funds to fill in the gap. They pay the rest of it. We just found out today that FEMA will be reimbursing it 100%. So Paul's been earmarking close to $70,000 for that 12.5%, which means that we'll be able to save that. So I just wanted to add that quick.
Wow. Beautiful.
Things are looking good.
All right. Any other discussion? Not? Call the roll.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Douglas Winters.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sashaw.
Yes.
Joe Feltes.
Yes.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Talleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
16 to 0.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. On my number five on the resolution, I have Mr. Schultz being on number five.
Somebody has the old... Deb, we'll get that wherever she went. We got to get her a new template. We'll get that fixed.
We have to get you a new template. Your number five is still got Mr. Schultz.
John Schultz.
As a...
We'll fix it. We'll fix it.
Sorry, Joe.
Okay. Thank you. Item D, Board of Health Committee, Public Health Budget Adjustment.
Whereas the Trempl County Health Department has been awarded the additional grant funds $267,792 to cover wages for the COVID-19 pandemic in Trempl County that was not previously included in the department's budget. Whereas since the Health Department's original budget did not include these additional grant funds, such funds need to be added to the budget. And whereas these additional funds, grant funds do not require the county to make any additional appropriations or provide matching funds. Now be it resolved that $267,792 be added to the 2020 Public Health Revenue Account 201.46509 and to the 2020 Public Health Wages and Salaries Expenditure Account 201.54110.111. Introduced by Board of Health Committee, Beth Killian, Sally Miller, Rick Nimitz, Joe Feltes, Pam Nelson, Dr. Kim Breedenbach.
Motion by Joe Feltes. Seconded by Jeanne Nutter. Roll call. Oh, any discussion? Not? Roll call.
Is somebody from the Health Department up there?
What?
Was that Mel?
She wanted to know if somebody from the Health Department was here.
Nobody's here from Health. Did you want to speak to the subject, Beth?
Well, the funds were given. I don't know if there are any questions at all. It seems pretty cut and dried to me.
I think it's a quarter million dollars coming back into the budget, which is always good news, so I think we can just call the roll.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Douglas Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sashaw.
Yes.
Joe Feltes.
Yes.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Talleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
16 to 0.
Item D2, Health Department Undesignated Fund.
Whereas the Public Health Department has a $100,000 undesignated fund balance. And whereas it is prudent to continue a Department of Health undesignated fund balance for unexpected expenses. And whereas due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we anticipate unvetted expenses in testing, vaccinating, and contact tracing. Whereas we have seen that follow-up on health issues can exceed the present budget and undesignated fund balance. And whereas funding sources can be unreliable. And whereas approval for the use of these funds must proceed through the proper channels and be approved by the County Board of Supervisors. Now be it resolved that the Trempl County Board of Supervisors do hereby authorize an undesignated fund balance of $300,000 for the Health Department be effective with the 2020 audit submitted by Trempl County Board of Health, Beth Killian, Rick Nimitz, Sally Miller, Joe Feltes, Pam Nelson, Dr. Kim Breedenbach.
Killian will make a motion to approve.
Who is that?
Beth Killian made a motion. I'll take Joe as the second this time. She saw she's related. Any discussion at all? Mr. Brandt.
I would like Beth, I think, or Joe, to describe what the... Well, where the money's coming from and whether it has any relation to the previous resolution and what it's going to be used for. I know you talk about contract tracing and vaccinating and testing. How... What was the conversation at the Board of Health around this?
Can you answer that, Joe? Beth, do you want to try and answer that question? Could you hear the question?
I believe that the Board of Health has had in the past like $100,000 for emergency-type situations. And quite a while ago, we had increased that, and that's where that kind of came from. Because you never know what's going to be there, so holding that money aside in the contingency fund, if you're going to use it or not, kind of like Deb Sukla talked about earlier.
I guess, Beth, my question specifically was, does that increase represent or have anything to do with the money that just came from the federal government? From FEMA?
I believe, I believe, yes, but I can't swear to that.
Because I noticed you're not asking for any money from the General Fund, so I assume there was a source from someplace else.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Deb.
I believe because the money that's coming back from FEMA is just going to come to the county in general. This is basically about replacing what has been spent and then allocating to ensure that should such a future event happen, we do have the resources to deal with immediate needs.
That's all right.
That is true.
Okay, that's a good, good summation.
Thank you.
It's exactly like the Human Services, they have two different contingency funds. So it's exactly the same thing, one in the nutrition program and one in Human Services.
Okay.
And any money over this amount at any end of year will go back to the General Fund.
Saying no, no further discussion, we'll call for the roll.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Talleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Doug Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sashaw.
Yes.
Joe Feltes.
Yes.
16 to 0.
The next one came from Law Enforcement, Emergency Management, and Exec Finance, the carryover of Child Support 2020 Funds into the 2021 Budget.
Whereas the 2020 Child Support Agency Budget included funding for a project to convert the agency's physical files to electronic files. Whereas the 2020 Budget also allowed for expenditures to sort and shred old physical files in compliance with state and federal regulations and to reduce the need for physical space to store the files. Whereas work associated with both projects was not completed in 2020 due to delays associated with COVID-19 concerns, including the overall plan of work with the vendor and remote work schedules of agency staff. Whereas there is also a need for additional funds in the 2021 Budget to provide cellphones for four part-time remote workers and a hotspot for one worker to allow access to county-state internet programs. Whereas the funds remaining in the 2020 Budget for the file conversion and shredding project will be needed in 2021 to complete these projects. Whereas transferring these funds from the 2020 Budget to the 2021 Budget would allow for the completion of these projects without needing additional monies from the General Fund for the 2020 and 2021 Budget. Whereas it is in the best interest of Trempl County to carry over the unused balances rather than levy additional money in the 2021, in 2021 for them. Now be it resolved that the Trempl County Board of Supervisors is hereby authorized a carryover of funds from the 2020 Child Support Agency Budget to the 2021 Child Support Agency Budget as follows. 101.54330.810 Outlay Laser Fish Project, $16,000 to be carried into the same line item. 101.54330.310 Office Supplies and Shredding, $3,000 to be carried into the same line item. And 101.54330.311 Postage excess of $4,500, $3,500 to be carried into the 101.54330.810 Outlay Laser Fish Project, and $1,000 to be carried over into 101.54330.225 Telephone, for a total carryover of $23,500. Introduced by the Law Enforcement and Management, Emergency Management Committee, Ron Johnson, Tim Ziegler, Sally Miller, Rick Nimitz, Randy Talleson, and Executive Finance Committee, Chuck Wallach, John Austin, George Brandt, Richard Sashaw, Tim Ziegler.
Motion to approve.
So.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Seconded by Mr. Wallach. Any discussion? Saying none, hearing none. Call the roll.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sashaw.
Yes.
Joe Feltes.
Yes.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Talleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
16 to 0.
Item M, Audit Committee, Members' Claims.
Whereas the Audit Committee has audited the following claims and recommend that they be allowed as follows. John Austin, $428.75. George Brandt, $239.10. Joe Feltes, zero. Michelle Haynes, zero. Ron Johnson, $215.55. Beth Killian, $263.84. Sally Miller, $50. Michael Nelson, $50. Rick Nimitz, $256.95. Jeanne Nutter, $150. Richard Sashaw, $239.70. Dan Schreiner, $150. Kurt Scoyan, $200. Randy Talleson, $208.65. Chuck Wallach, $447.68. Douglas Winters, $338. Tim Ziegler, $205.20. Total per diem's $2,750. Total expenses $693.42. Grand total $3,443.42. Now be it resolved that the claims be allowed as shown. Introduced by Audit Committee, John Austin, Sally Miller, Dick Sashaw.
Motion for approval?
So.
Motion by Mr. Sashaw.
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe Feltes. No discussion? We're ready to call the roll.
Okay. Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Douglas Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sashaw.
Yes.
Joe Feltes.
Yes.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Talleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
16 to 0.
Item 7, Whereas Michael Nelson served on the Highway Committee for the past 11 years and has resigned, we need to vote on a new member to replace him on the Highway Committee. And it has to be a board member that could attempt as any of it to do it tonight to get him. So I'm looking for him.
Sure.
Yes.
We're being warned short. Can't we wait till we get a new member on?
I was figuring that's not necessarily the best spot to put a new member on, if we could. It's up to this board. They can do whatever they want.
The position has to be elected, so...
It's got to be elected.
If you wait till next time.
So you want to hold off a month? I was just hoping, because we'll have a, we'll have a highway meeting.
Well, he hasn't been on for a couple times. There's still more.
Yeah. Do we want to hold off for a month?
That's my feeling.
Want to make that a motion to hold off for a month? You want to make that a motion, or... It's up to you. Want to make it a motion?
I'll make a motion that we hold off until...
Second to his motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded. Do we do a roll call vote?
I'll give you a voice vote.
Okay, voice vote. All's in favor of delaying this for one month? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It carries. Go ahead.
Next.
Next item is Committee Reports, Exec Finance.
Everything was mailed to you in your packets, or for those that went electronic this time with their new laptops, you got the whole package, Sally and Beth. Sorry about that, Michelle. You should have gotten it in the mail, though, right?
Okay, Killian did receive hers.
What?
Killian did receive hers.
You did?
Yes, I read it online.
Oh, you didn't... I sent you an email.
Yes, I read it in the email attachment.
Oh, there you go. Yes.
I was going to ask Mr. Winters, how is yours laptop working?
I had it a couple times. I put it away. I got a bigger one.
Correspondence, I have none.
Can I do one thing? You had announcements to make. Can I just announce? Make sure everybody is using their county email, because that's address, because that's what we're sending things out to. So when it comes to us going with our laptops, when we get totally electronic, I guess, it's going to be sent to your county email. So don't, don't look for it in your personal one.
Chris Scoyan.
Yeah. How are we supposed to, are we supposed to stop in and get them, or how are you going to do it?
Maybe you could ask.
There's a... You want to use mine?
We're in the process of getting them all set up, and then we'll schedule a one-on-one drive with you.
So you want us to stop in?
Make sure you have access to your county email and...